Two thousand and eighteen Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Mr. Owen, do we have need for a non-public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have matters of litigation and real estate to discuss.
Okay, and I think we have one on some confidential material under J., as I recall. The second item on the agenda is the minutes of April eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and I would like to change the agenda. It was not a special meeting, it was the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to those minutes? I have two under members present. We need vice scratched. At that point, I was the chair. And on page fourteen, from the top, one, two, three, four, five, six paragraph down, the year was nineteen ninety-six. Those are the two. Does anybody else have anything? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
No motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye opposed? All right.
I'll abstain.
Okay, one abstention. Next thing, we're going to go on to public hearings on temporary outdoor event permit. And the first one is, and I'm going to read the public notice because what's in the agenda and what's in the public notice are different. The Veterans' Count Easter Seals to hold a five K run on August eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, from six a.m. to ten thirty a.m., starting and ending at the Boat Museum. And this is going to go along the Cotton Valley Trail. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this special event? Mr. Owen, did you make contact with the people from?
Yes, I believe Ann routinely contacts the applicants and informs them of their appointment times.
Board, what would you like to do with this? Do you want to table it? It's an August event.
I think it looks pretty, pretty cut and dry.
Okay.
I believe this is the event that Chief Rondo is associated with.
Okay, and he must have gotten held up. I'm, I'm comfortable if everybody else is comfortable with this, and we'll add that it's going to go along the Cotton Valley Trail. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the issuance of temporary outdoor event permit to Veterans' Count Easter Seals to hold a five K run on August eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, from six to ten thirty a.m., beginning and ending at the New Hampshire Boat Museum and using the Cotton Valley Rail Trail.
Okay, and before we go on, I forgot, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event in the public? Okay. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye opposed? Okay, next item is Life Ministry Food Pantry to have a table set up to sell concert tickets, raffle tickets, and seek donations on June twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and July first, two thousand and eighteen, from nine a.m. to seven p.m. in front of Spencer Hughes Real Estate. So I'd like to open that public hearing. Would you please state your name for the record?
Yes, Bruce McCracken, I'm on the Board of Directors of the Life Ministry's Food Pantry, and you'll notice that items two and three are quite similar. Both are asking permission to set up tables. We have a hunger relief effort each summer, this is the third summer we've done this, and we have tables downtown where we sell raffle tickets, solicit donations, and also sell tickets for the culminating concert, which happens at the end of the weekend. So we'll be doing that again this year. It's been very successful in the past.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. There is just one comment on here, is do not block the sidewalk.
Okay.
That is the only thing. Everything else looks fine to me. Board members, does anybody else have any comments or questions? Seeing and hearing none, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to Life Ministry's Food Pantry to set up a table to sell concert tickets, raffle tickets, and to seek donations on June twenty-ninth and thirtieth, and July first, two thousand and eighteen, from nine a.m. to seven p.m. in front of Spencer Hughes Real Estate.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, I'd like to open the next public hearing, Life Ministry's Food Pantry, to have a table set up to sell concert tickets, raffle tickets, seek donations, on June twenty-ninth, thirtieth, July one, two thousand and eighteen, from nine a.m. to seven p.m. at Dockside. And this is the exact same thing, you're just going to have two tables that, that day.
Yes.
Okay, do I have anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, there is also the comment about do not block the walkways or boat launching and traffic lanes.
Okay.
Okay? And I'm, I'm assuming you'll find a place that doesn't cause any trouble on that. Okay. Board members, anybody else? Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the issuance of a temporary event permit to Life Ministry's Food Pantry to set up a table to sell concert tickets, raffle tickets, and to seek donations on June twenty-ninth, thirty, and July one, from nine a.m. to seven p.m. at Dockside.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed? Have your two permits. Good luck.
Thank you very much. One question, I noticed that the raffle permit for the aforementioned raffle is under the bulk vote. Would you like me to stay to speak to that?
No, that just goes through.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Okay, the next public hearing is the Wolfboro Public Library to hold a children's concert on June twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, from noon to four p.m. at the Wolfboro Community Bandstand.
Good evening, I'm Joyce Davis, I'm here on behalf of the library. Each year, we have a kickoff to our summer reading adventure. This year, we'd like to have a concert in Kate Park in the bandstand. We've done, done that before, it's been really successful. This year's summer reading theme, for those of you that are interested, and I know you all are, is let's rock and roll and read. So we have two performers that are coming, doing, they'll, you know, bring their own sound system, and they'll do original music and storytelling. In addition to this, I don't, I, we've applied for the use of this room as a backup in case it rains that day. Do you have that application?
That is, just goes through Dave Owen's office. We, we don't have to hold any public hearing on that, this is just a temporary event, so if you've done that, that should take care of it. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any comments, concerns? I know that a lot of children come to this, it was a fun event, I've taken my grandchildren to it. Okay.
Move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Wolfboro Public Library to hold a children's concert on June twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, from noon to four p.m. at the Wolfboro Community Bandstand.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye opposed? All right, you have your permit. I'd like to open up the next public hearing, it's the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen, we'll hold, and I'm reading the public notice, will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May second, two thousand and eighteen, at six thirty-five at the Wolfboro Town Hall, Grade Hall, eighty-four South Main, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, to consider the application of Justin Brown and Pamela Brown for a discretionary preservation easement for historical agricultural structure pursuant to RSA seventy-nine dash D. The structure barn is located at six oh three Brown's Ridge Road. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this? Huh? Come on up, state your name for the record.
The Browns here?
They haven't, are the Browns here? Nope. No?
So I'm Maggie Steer, Chair of the Heritage Commission. We're in support of extending this discretionary preservation easement for the barn. It is a truly impressive structure. It has had some modest additions, but I have had a good look at it, and it looks like it's being maintained per the agreement, and we want to try to keep those agricultural structures as contributing to the character of our rural landscape, so the Heritage Commission would support this.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this preservation barn easement? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, I had, I got an article that was in the Granite State News on the barn, and it gave some history. It is eighteen hundred barn, it says eighteen thirty, and it gave us some history. Does anybody have any questions, concerns? Okay, I have, I did drive by it, and when we did the initial discretionary easement, we only gave them a twenty-five percent discount, in other words, they pay seventy-five percent of the full value assessment, and the reason for that was on the left side, there were some additions built, but there were also big gas tanks out there that kind of detracted from the barn itself. When I went out there today, those are gone, and it is used as a farm. So I feel differently about the percentage this time opposed to the last time. So I don't know where other board members are. Mr. Owen, do you have any comment?
No, except I say I neglected to give the board a form of motion for this.
I wrote one.
Good.
I did write one.
Does anybody, we do need to decide on the percentage of.
What we've done, at least since I've been here, is usually around fifty percent.
Yeah, we did.
Going out on twenty-eight.
Yeah, the one, you mean the old.
Bittersweet.
That was one. I believe the last, the big old, old one that burned down, we were down at twenty-five because of that. I'm, I'm comfortable with either twenty-five or fifty, wherever the majority of the board would like to go on it.
Also, I think the public needs to know that any of these things, and I love to strike the preservation raises everybody else's tax rate, maybe only a few mills, but that is the side effect of any of these discretion.
Okay, so are you suggesting, what percentage are you suggesting then?
I'm suggesting fifty percent.
Is everybody comfortable?
I am.
Fifty?
Because of the family that's there and what they're doing.
Yeah, I, I'm in that. Maybe you're okay with fifty percent?
Yep.
Okay, let's see how my motions go here. If I can find what I did with it. All righty, okay, here it is. I move that the Board of Selectmen have determined that the barn at six oh three Brown Ridge Road qualifies for discretionary preservation easement for historic agricultural structure pursuant to RSA, RSA seventy-nine D, seventy-nine dash D, because the barn demonstrates a public benefit, since the barn is historically important to the town of Wolfboro, since it was built in the eighteen hundreds, and provides a scenic enjoyment to the public from a public way, Brown Ridge Road. And I further move that the Board of Selectmen assess property at fifty percent of its full value assessment as authorized under RSA seventy-nine D dash seven.
I'll second that.
Okay, do we have any further discussions?
I'd like to suggest, I'm in favor of this, and I will vote yes, but I think that we have a tremendous amount of wonderful historical things, maybe we should have some sort of a policy, so if someone else has a barn on, let's say, Middleton Road or something, we don't reinvent the wheel. You know, instead of maybe have Maggie, who's in the audience here, or someone, come up with a model description of what a historical structure is, and so it's consistent, so somebody doesn't get sixty percent and somebody else gets thirty-five percent.
I think that's fair.
That's just a discussion, not, not, not relevant to the motion.
Okay, we can, sure, come on up, Maggie.
I didn't bring the full text of the statute, but it does spell out very clearly, and you cited some of those reasons in your motion, public benefit, historic importance, and I'm not sure that the town needs to add to what the state statute already includes. The reason it's called a discretionary preservation easement is the power is meant to be in the hands of the selectmen as to how much you feel it rates value in terms of the tax relief that they get. The Heritage Commission would be happy to play a stronger advisory role here and help you to understand the pluses and minuses if we're called upon to do so. And I'm sorry, we didn't do more for this one, but I approve of the fifty percent, I think that's a nice compromise, given that the building does have additional structures on the side. They may be removable, but its original form is not completely intact.
That's true.
Maggie question, something like the Hutchins Mansion on Center Street, or the Crystal Palace on Pleasant Street, beautiful mansions, if, if an owner of one of those says, gosh, this is historic, can I have less than the full rate? What do we do with that?
Well, it has to be for an historic agricultural structure.
It has to be agricultural.
There are no tax breaks on residential property.
It has to be agricultural.
That didn't pass the legislature, and probably never will.
It has to be agricultural.
So it has to be agricultural.
Yes.
But it could be a barn, it could be a chicken coop, it could be a corn crib, any number of things like that.
Thank you. The Avery Building won't be getting a deduction.
The Avery Building won't, but for instance, the Hutchins Building does have a carriage shed, and that may be considered a historic agricultural structure and might qualify. We have a lot of in-town barns, too, and those might qualify as well.
Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, I, I like what Mr. Bowers has offered. I think that one person's discretion is another person's arbitrary, and I think that you can help us a lot, not by giving us a formula, I don't think, you know, I don't think the ask is for, you know, a formulaic way of looking at it, but to give us perspective, give us coaching, so that at the end of the day, if someone says, well, how come I only got thirty-eight percent and the other person got thirty-nine percent? You know, we, we just got to get away from discretion and arbitrary, we've got to kind of move to some kind of judgment, and if you can help us do that, that would be, I think that would be pretty awesome. So, consider it.
Yeah, and I think that going out and looking, I mean, that's one of the things I did today, and saw the difference between ten years ago and today, and I'm absolutely fine with fifty percent. So, I have a motion on the floor, did I get a second?
Yes.
Did second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed? All right, motion carried, and that we've taken care of. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the bulk vote, we have the weekly manifest and raffle ticket. Can I have a motion to accept the bulk vote?
There was a second late raffle ticket application.
What was it for?
Performance stage company.
Okay, so we need to add the performant.
Is that the fifty-fifty raffle?
Right.
Yeah.
And that's added to this bulk vote? Is everybody comfortable adding it?
Yep.
Okay, so when we are approving the volk, vote, bulk vote, this performant raffle will also be included. Okay, and I have a motion to accept the bulk vote.
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed? All righty, on to the next part of the agenda, and the first, the next item is appointments, and the first appointment is the Heritage Commission. We have two opening, we have one opening with two applicants. We have Ron Ronzetti and Suzanne Ryan. Ron, is he here? No, he's not. Suzanne, do you have anything to say? And then I will get you afterwards. Do you want to make any comment?
Is that other person here, the other applicant?
No.
I would just like to give the board a little background about my views on historic preservation. You have a little bit of it in your request form there, but I came to realize there was something that I didn't put down, which was, the first go-around for this building, I was on that committee, and we put together the initial specifications and put out to bid for the first architectural firm. So that was quite an undertaking, although I must say, I took a different avenue on the third go-around, but at any rate, it was quite a task. Also, the Cotton Mountain Church up in my northeast Wolfboro, I was the, were a small group, I was the lead person for the restoration of that building, both structurally and aesthetically, with local contractors and proper materials of the proper kind that were historic, had the shutters done over in, I think it's Osseby, the mill over there, were all hand, hand done, the windows were all hand re-glazed with the original old glass. We tried to keep as much of a historic fabric as possible, and that was quite an expensive project, probably forty, fifty thousand dollars, with all the structural underpinnings as well replaced, and clawboards, and a new roof, and there's still a little more to do, but that's besides my own endeavors of homes that I have hands-on experience restoring. When I say restore, I don't mean remodel, I mean restore, there is a difference, so I just thought it would be something that would be up my alley, if the board's so inclined. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann?
Hi, my name's Ann Blodgett, I'm the Vice Chair of the Heritage Commission. Maggie's also here, but she figured you should hear both our voices, so that's what I, anyway, I, I want to thank Suzanne for her interest and her, and all her work on restoration and things she's done. Before you, I have written up what the feedback was from the Heritage Commission for your consideration. Mr. Ronzetti stepped forward quite, I think, quite a while ago, a couple weeks ago, so, and then there, we also wrote up for him his other attributes.
I guess, Mr. Owen, was he told about this meeting?
He was contacted, yes.
Board members, anybody have any comments?
I guess I don't understand the memo. What's, what's the purpose of the memo? What's the purpose of this document?
This is, I guess, this is the Heritage Commission's.
Feedback.
Feedback preference for new appointee to the commission, and they've written it down, that Ron is a full member, Suzanne is an alternate, and they've given their reasons why, as Chair and Vice Chair, for that.
Any comment?
Yep.
I do not know Mr. Ronzetti, but being a member of the Heritage Commission, and also loving Wolfboro history, and having never met him, I might suggest that he apply for the next opening. We know, all know that Suzanne speaks her own mind, and sometimes we don't all agree with that, but if you mention something that Suzanne, Suzanne will say, oh, I've been there, I know what it is, and you have, you have knowledge, so for what that's worth, I, I think we're dealing with somebody here that, that no one knows, yet he's coming from Boston, brand new in town, and I suggest that maybe you get a little bit more acquainted and apply next time.
Just a quick correction, he's not brand new in town?
Pardon?
He's not brand new in town, he went to Brewster Academy, he's been coming here for years.
I've never met him or heard of him before, and I'm pretty well up on history.
I know who he is.
I, I like him, and if he's a trustee of Brewster, I think that's really great, and I'd do anything to help him, but here's a complete person that I don't think many of us know, and, and he didn't show up at the meeting.
Any other members down here have any comments?
Well, I'm familiar with, with Ron, so I don't have any issues with him.
I'm familiar with Ron as well. I'm just surprised he's not here.
Well, I think he had short notice, so I'm.
Short notice of.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I would move that we nominate Suzanne for the position.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. I, I know both of them, and I think he, he needed to be here, and I think that that, to me, is a, a drawback, and I, that's why I asked Mr. Owen whether he'd been called, and most time, if somebody can't make it, they will call in and say, I can't make it for a reason, so I feel, I feel that Suzanne has taken the time and the effort, has volunteered for many things, and has shown up here tonight. We know, so that's my second. So is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so Suzanne.
I want to make a comment, I, Suzanne, you and I know, go back way, way, long, long ways, and I think that Suzanne is probably one of the most vocal people in town, I don't always agree with Suzanne, nor does the board, but Suzanne tries hard, works hard, and knows the territory, and I, I think that the choice would be, the choice would be good one, and I think that Mr. Ronzetti, if he would be, next time there's an opening, and this, you know, certainly the Heritage Commission has multiple openings, it's a nice group, and it's a fun group, and he should, he should be encouraged to apply again or become an alternate or do something.
Dave?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, we install Ron as an alternate on the Heritage Commission.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, Milfoil, Robert Pierre Pont, hope I pronounced his name right this time, is asking to be on the Milfoil Committee. Last time, he had suggested that he would be willing to be on one of the committees, he's willing to be on the Milfoil Committee. I'll tell you that we can use every member that we can get, so. Any other board members have comments on this?
Is he here?
No, but he was here last time. We were making appointments, he.
Right, and if I may, Madam Chair, he approached me after the, you know, the appointments were made last time, and he was a little surprised he got appointed to the Conservation Commission because he was, you know, applying to the Milfoil Committee. He said he would still like to be on the Milfoil Committee, if there's some, some way to accommodate him, and you may recall that he's a former Navy Petty Officer, former Navy Diver, he knows a lot about aquatics, and so I think he would be an asset to the Milfoil Committee.
I agree. Any other comments or questions? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Robert Pierre Point as an alternate member of the Milfoil Committee for three years.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed? Okay, next one is the library trustees, and it's an alternate, and Thomas Madden, is he here? Do you want to give us the information, and just state your name for the record?
Hi, Linda Wilberton. Thomas Madden, for personal reasons, would like to move from a trustee to an alternate trustee.
So he is now a trustee, and we're, we're moving him over?
To be an alternate, right.
Any board members have any questions? Any board members have any questions? If you'd like to, can I have a motion?
Move to appoint Thomas Madden as an alternate member of the Wolfboro Board of Library Trustees with the term to expire July 31st, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, he's appointed. In our...
I see that Susan Razor has sold her house in Resale. I've been with Susan on a couple of committees. She was a very dynamic person, and I'd like to thank her just for being a part of Wolfboro. I'll miss her, but she was a very good committee member and a good community asset while she was here.
Okay. We, in our packet, there is a note from Matt Sullivan about Susan Razor and that opening of position on the ZBA, and I stepped down for that, and I'm going to turn this over to Vice Chair Dave Senical. Mr. Owen, do you have something?
Yes, we put out a notice looking for applicants for this vacant position, and we have received one application so far.
In my discussions with Matt, I felt that we should put this out and advertise again, which we have done, so we'll see what comes in in the next couple of weeks. In our next formal meeting, we will address the vacancy of the ZBA.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any objection to that?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, we're now going on to new business, and the first item is the proclamation of the Municipal Clerks Week, and I'll read that proclamation. Whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizen, the local governing body, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality, impartiality, and render equal service to all, whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas municipal clerks continually serve to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and natural annual meeting of their state, county, and professional organizations. Whereas it's most, it's most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment, accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen, do recognize the week of May 6th through May 12th, 2018, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend our appreciation to our municipal clerk, Pat M. Waterman, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent dated the second day of May 2018 by the Board of Selectmen of Wolfboro. Any selectmen have any comment? Okay, we proclaim that, and let's see, do we need a motion for that?
Yep, we do. And it's been here for forty-nine, forty-nine years.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign a proclamation declaring the week of May 6th through 12th, 2018, is Municipal Clerks Week.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay, next item, Mr. Chamberlain, it's the lease agreement for a new, new copiers.
Evening, Pete Chamberlain, Finance Director. Every four years, we traditionally gone out for proposals for leasing copier equipment from the town. We usually do a fair market value lease. We do not purchase the equipment at the end of the lease, because at the end of four years, the equipment is pretty much ready to go someplace else, and there's really no value to it, so... This particular, this particular, the lease itself has been reviewed by Town Council, it's exactly the same as four years ago, and the price is less, somewhat less than we were paying over the last four years per year, so... The equipment is, the equipment has been very good, and we haven't had any problems, especially during budget season, trying to get things done, so, which is why I'd like to see you release with Sharp.
Okay, any members of the board? Dave?
Yeah, I couldn't see in here, Pete, I assume, and I can assume different things, but these are brand-new copy machines?
Brand-new, yeah.
Brand-new?
Yes, absolutely.
Because it didn't really say, it says leasing of equipment and stuff, but it didn't say that it was brand-new. It just says leasing.
It's, yeah, yeah, it's, it's new. The bid spec specifies new. There are actually, there were actually five other companies that proposed, did not include the RECO because it was twice as much as this, and the other four did not meet the spec, and for whatever reason, mostly, mostly having had experience here with them, bad experiences with them, so...
Any other board members have any comments, concerns? Okay, can I have a motion? Sure, come on up.
David Kirkoff, I don't think that approving the motion would be in the best interest of Wolfboro. There was a qualified vendor out there that did submit a substantially less cost did for the town with equipment that exceeded the specifications, and I have supporting documentation for you. If you would turn to the back section, the last page, there's some inserts there. One that has the competitive bid process, highlighted in yellow what the process is supposed to be for competitive bids, and they shall be awarded to the lowest responsible qualified bidder. The spreadsheet that I've included, the first sheet shows the three Sharp dealerships that bid on the program, and Seacoast Business Machines was the one that came up on top. The spreadsheet with the red at the top shows where New England Office Solutions came in, both on service and the equipment, and if you read to the bottom in the green, it saves the town of Wolfboro thirty-three hundred twenty-six dollars annually, and thirteen thousand three hundred and five dollars over the course of the four-year contract. So I don't think it's in the best interest of the town of Wolfboro to approve leases where you could be saving three thousand dollars annually that can be spent in areas I'm sure the town could use.
I have a question.
Sure.
Would you comment on where you're physically located? What's your mean time to...
Well, why don't we let Pete respond, and then you, and then, I'm sorry, I didn't catch in time, but Pete stood up to make a comment. Do you have a comment, Pete?
I don't agree. And we've had experience with the machines that he's quoting, and they were some not, we didn't have very good experience with them, a lot of maintenance problems, and not with his company, but...
Okay, thank you.
I would ask, what that was?
I, I'm going to go on to, I need you, you, we heard yours, we have it, there was a question, and you may answer his, his questions to you. Paul, do you want to...
Pete, sorry for stepping on you there. Sorry, Paul, yes. So my question was, where are you physically located? Mean time to, between failures of these machines compared to mean time between failures of the machines we're going to get? Simple calculus.
So, I don't know what the mean time failure rate is for the Sharp equipment. Our equipment, where, first, our locations are in Concord, New Hampshire, and in Berry, Vermont, so those are our two main locations. We also have two sales offices, one in Vermont and one in New Hampshire. Westmoreland is the New Hampshire location, south of the Keene area. So those are the locations that we'd be servicing you out of.
What's your mean time to service to Wolfboro?
The main service for Wolfboro would come out...
Which mean time, average time to get here to service a down copier for Wolfboro?
It's two-hour response time by phone and four-hour response time in person.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members have any questions?
I would add that Toshiba was line of the year for copiers by BLI, which is an independent source.
I've had personal experience with Toshiba machines before, and I had, although it was quite a while ago, and did not, you know, I had some fairly, fairly large machines, several medium-sized machines, and had some real problems with them staying up and running, so... That's what, that's the only way I can base my, part of my evaluation, which is part of the purchasing policy of the town of Wolfboro, that's one of the things that, during, toward the front of the purchasing policy, that's one of the things, the quality and reliability of whatever is you're purchasing, it can be taken into consideration.
Mr. Owen, how would you think it's best for us to, to proceed?
I believe we put this out as a request for proposals, as opposed to a straight bid, is that correct?
Well, I don't know what the wording I used. I think you probably used bid, sealed bids, but it also said there was a, there was also, at the end of it, said that the Board of Selectmen reserves the right to accept or reject any or all bids for any reason or no reason, that they in their sole discretion deem to be in the best interest of the town of Wolfboro.
The proposal...
Brad, Brad, okay, excuse me, go ahead.
Well, the proposal that Pete is putting forward is at a slight reduction in cost over what we have been paying, I believe, is that not correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Yep, so, you know, it looked to me like it was a good, you know, good proposal. I was in support of it.
Mr. Harriman?
I guess the question I got Pete is, did this bid come in originally with the, with the bids and stuff, or is this coming after the fact?
No, he was on time, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Any other board members have any question?
Just a comment, it's, it's hard for me to judge. Numbers are numbers. But at the end of the day, it's availability, response time of the devices. I have no basis to compare, and maybe, Pete, you can help me out. I, you know, I can't compare...
I'm just using my...
Your prices are X, and, you know, somebody else's prices are Y, so got that part, but I just don't have any, any comparison on whether these things are reliable, available, and when they break, how long it takes to get them fixed.
Well, I, you know, I've been at what I do for close to thirty-nine years now, and I'm just, I use my honest opinion about what I think about equipment. If I don't like a piece of equipment, it hasn't worked correctly for me, I tell you, you know, whether it's the cheapest or not is not necessarily, with copiers, just because the, you know, a bid or a proposal on copiers, it's cheap, it doesn't mean you're going to get machines that are going to work. If you want cheap copiers, then, then, you know, my, my concern is, is that when comes, when it comes time to prepare the budget books, they're going to have something that's going to stand up.
Okay, I'm going to ask the, the board, I, I have another woman in the audience who would like to talk, and I, the gentleman, and when you do come back up, if you give your name, that would, would help us, but I'm going to check with the board, are you comfortable letting anybody speak? This is a board decision?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just need to...
Yep, no problem.
Okay.
My name is Shelley Quinn. I am the sales rep for New England Office Solutions. I would also like to just clarify that, yes, we presented the bid, and we were under the assumption that all bids were going to be given equal consideration. I received an email from Peter stating that our bid, as well as several others, were dismissed automatically without even looking at the numbers because of the brand. He also did not call any of our references, and his experience with Toshiba was not with our company, just with the brand, and technology does change over time, and if his experience with Toshiba was years and years ago, the Toshiba of today is different than the Toshiba of whenever he experienced Toshiba. He should have done his due diligence when he's dealing with taxpayer dollars, to have called our references, to check with customers, to find out, how does the equipment work? Are you having any issues? What is the turnaround time? He should have found that information out, he did not. He was determined to go with Sharp equipment, and he dismissed all other bids without considering them at all, and I do not think that is the proper bid process according to your rules. Therefore, I think the bid should not be approved at this time, and all of the bids should be given equal consideration before, and I don't know if we are the lowest bid, we may not be. I know that we, if we gave our very, very best, reducing our profit, reducing, getting special financing for towns, to try to make it as affordable for the town of Wolfboro as possible. And so I'm putting it out there to let you guys make a decision, not based on just one man's opinion, but really analyze all of the bids in a thorough way before you make your decision. That's my recommendation, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Pete, do you have anything else to say at this point in time? Okay, board, how would you like to handle this? Dave?
I'm just making a comment, not knowing, not knowing about that. I just saw this now, so of course I didn't have any chance to study it, but I do think that there's something to be said if, if the town has had experience with a, with a supplier, like I have an insurance agency here that I signed up with insurance a number of years ago. Every once in a while, someone says, "Can I review your insurance? We can save you five percent," and I have not done that, I lost, lost a vote, had a few things, and they, they do it instantly. I'm very happy with my insurance agency, and if someone could say I could save you five percent, ten percent, I would not do it. I think we're dealing with good, Sharp is a good, good outfit, I don't know, I've never heard of E-Studio, but maybe it's a very good outfit, too, but I don't think, I would, I would go with Pete's recommendation, just like I would go with a doctor, I wouldn't say, "I have surgery, can you do it cheaper?" If someone said, "This is a great doctor," and I have no, no problem whatsoever with the, I wish this company the very best, continued success, but if you have something that you are satisfied with, and have had good one-to-one relationships, it seems to me that should count for something.
Dave Senical, do you have any comments?
I pretty much agree with David.
Brad?
Yeah, kind of a similar type experience, a little different than what Dave just said, but I know when I do my, my bidding in Ospey there for paving and stuff, I do that by invitation only, because I only want to deal with a certain product and certain companies I've worked with, because I know there are other people who come in with a cheaper price, stuff like that, but I want to stay away from that. At times, I, you know, I want to go get the quality that we're looking for, for, for a long-term effect. So I understand, you know, Pete's desire to have the, you know, the Sharp machines here and stuff, and, and I kind of, you know, understand that concept there, that it's this workforce, and in person, I would be okay with that, so...
Paul, do you have any other comments?
I just, no, I don't. I've said what I had to say, I'm just a little concerned that on either bid, I don't see any, any maintenance stats, so I have no idea. So I have to think about how I'll vote.
You know, my feeling is that we, we don't have all the information, it goes through our bidding process, you know, that's why I asked Mr. Owen on how he felt as the town manager and how the process went, and he supported it and thought it looked like a good bid. I know that the town has had some machines that have caused us problems, and when it does, it's hard for us to... that does, it's hard for us to, gets the product out, get poor copies, et cetera. It's hard for us to read up here. You know, I'm assuming that, that Pete did his due diligence, that this is the best proposal that he has brought forth to us, and I haven't seen anything in the past that that's not the case. I don't have all the ones to, to look at. That really is not the job of the Board of Selectmen-
Right.
-is to go over, we count on staff. So I, I feel comfortable going with the, the staff recommendation. So do I have somebody who'd like to give a motion?
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen approve the proposal from Seacoast Business Machines for the provision and maintenance of copiers to the town of Wolfboro and enter into a forty-eight month lease agreement with lease capital funding at eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty cents a month, and that these are new machines.
Okay, do I have a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay.
Abstain.
All abstains. Alrighty. Next item on the agenda is agreement and pledge to gift to the Libby Museum. Mr. Owen, are you gonna present that, or is Alana gonna present it? Who's gonna, Alan Harding gonna present it?
I think Mr. Harding's gonna make some introductory-
Okay.
-comments, hopefully, and, okay.
I'm Alan Harding. Everybody knows who I am and I all do.
Can you pull the microphone up for you, up a little bit, so you speak into it? Ah, there you go.
Better. Good. Super. Basically, as I see it, this meeting tonight is a follow-up of Article 30 that the town voted on, on March thirteenth. I don't know what you have in front of you, but if you wanna stay with me, I'll read Article 30. Do you have Article 30 in front of you, by any chance?
No, I didn't, I bet.
No, no. So why don't you do that, that will also, the public will be able to hear that also.
This is the Article 30 Libby Museum feasibility study, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars, of which amount two-thirds of the cost will be borne by a private foundation and one-third by the town, for the purpose of conducting a feasibility study on design options to best accommodate both the, excuse me, the, best accommodate both the current Libby Museum collection and additions to it by improving and/or expanding the existing historic museum building, further to authorize the selectmen to accept the monies from the private foundation to be used for said purpose. The amount to be raised by general taxation shall not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. And this was approved by the town, the voters, eight hundred and sixty to three hundred and seventy-eight, which is seventy-two point four percent, on the heels of the selectmen recommending this Article five to nothing, unanimous, and the Budget Committee eight to nothing. So what I'm looking for tonight is a signature on this pledge agreement. Do you have the pledge agreement in front of you?
We have the, this agreement-
Okay.
With the town council has made changes, yes. We have that in front of us.
I will sign this as a co-trustee of the foundation. My other co-trustee is in Boston. I will have to, have to, Linda, if you approve this, Linda will sign, and I will take this to the donors on Friday for them to sign. We'll get it all finalized, and each, and every one of the people that sign it will get a copy, once this cycle is completed. We need everybody, all the parts have to be in this. The donors have to agree to do what they are going to do. I have to agree on behalf of the foundation that we are going to spend the money, give the money, grant the money, to, to make this whole thing work. It, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to attempt to answer them.
Anybody have any questions? Nope? Okay. Mr. Owen, do you have any issues? What we did receive was the agreement with the changes made by town council. Our town council has reviewed it, made some changes in relationship to correspond with the wording in the Warren article, and the maximum that the taxpayers would put forward is twenty-five thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And he wrote that in here. Is there, I'll go down through the board and see if we have anybody wanna make a comment? Do I have a comment from anybody? Any direction? I, I'm in favor of us moving forward and, and signing this. Anybody?
Make a motion or not?
I would, Brad.
I'll make a motion to approve the Keenans agreement and pledge gift, and pledge to gift North American Animal Collection to the Libby Museum and to authorize the Board's Chairman, Linda Murray, to sign the agreement on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
If, if I could, if I could add-
Yep.
If you have any questions, let's hear it. Is Elena here?
Yeah, I just asked, I just went back and asked her, and she went, she was fine. Yep.
Do you have any questions for the director?
I, I looked and she, I, I gave the board the opportunity, anybody have any questions before we vote on this? I think we've all comfortable, you're all set.
Excellent.
I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed or abstaining?
Can I give you the form?
You want me to sign it right now?
Why not?
Get a pen out. Do you have a pen with you?
Here you go.
I think the original-
You got original in there?
Do you have an original?
I've, oh, I can pick any pen I want.
Take a pen, take a pen.
Take a pen, anyone who has a pen?
Want blue or black?
Pete?
I got black, is that okay? Or would you prefer blue?
Everything wasn't a hundred percent easy to me.
Have you got one that's already signed? Oh, he does, okay. Yeah, you wanna sign down?
No, 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 no. Sorry, you can't sign.
It's okay. It's Linda's fault if something goes wrong.
That's right. My name's on the line. Thanks, guys.
Okay.
All right. You'll get us back a signed copy?
You'll get me a fully signed copy, Alan?
You'll, yeah. Okay. This way. Alrighty.
Final comment. I wanna thank you all for helping to put this major project in, in force. I would also ask some help in structuring the proper sequence of appearing before the CIP, the Budget Committee. I'm not, I'm not good at that.
Bless your heart. That's good, 'cause it's-
But we'd like to get on with this as soon as possible, and Elena needs some help on this, too. We've discussed this. The two of us can't do this and do it effectively. We've gotta have something from the top to help us.
What I would like to ask Mr. Owen, have Matt Sullivan write up the procedure, give it to the board, so we have a written copy, and we'll know dates and stuff, and we will go to, some of us will go to those meetings, when it's in the planning board and then on the ZBA, to support the project.
Yep.
So that's the best way I know. Any other suggestions from the board?
I'd just say that, you know, I'd offer to help out in any regard along this whole project, too, you know, from the board and stuff here with Alan and Alana, to whether it's meetings, attending with, with Chris and stuff, when I get this going, or help out with coordinating and getting information to the meetings that we need to for CIP and all that stuff, so we happen to help out any way I can on that with you guys.
I feel better.
Yeah. And I think you can get a call on any of us to do that when you need us. And we'll get, and we'll get that list to you, Alan.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is the confirmative deed of tax map thirty-three, lot twenty-one at Penn Air Estate. Mr. Owen, I'm assuming you're going to do this, or are you gonna bring Brenda up?
Well, Brenda's downstairs. I told her I'd bring her up for the non-public, but I think this is pretty much self-explanatory.
Okay.
It's, it's, this is following up on a situation that was created when the town sold a tax-deeded parcel back in the nineteen nineties, and the person that bought the parcel did not get it recorded at the Registry of Deeds. He did, he's lost his deed, and he wants to sell, sell the parcel, but he can't prove that he owns it now. So we're, we're trying to assist by providing him a confirmatory deed for tax map parcel, tax map thirty-three, lot twenty-one at Penn Air Estates.
My only comment is, thank goodness for Brenda Lapointe in the tax collector's office who keeps these records, and he owes her big. Does anybody on the board have any comments, concerns? Hearing none, does somebody wanna give a motion?
I move that we confirm the deed to tax map thirty-three, lot twenty-one of Penn Air Estates, as requested.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No, we're moving on. Next item on the agenda is a, our first look at the guidelines for two nineteen. I asked Dave Owen to put it on this agenda, the agenda for May sixteenth. It looks like a larger agenda. Last year, we approved our guidelines about the seventh of June. I was hoping that we could do some work on this, and then when Becky came, she could look at our, our draft and see if she wanted to make any changes. Is that agreeable with everybody?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Let's look at number one. It reads right now, to have all departments spread their projects over ten years, and I would like to kind of change the wording to that a little bit, to have all departments spread their projects over ten years, and where asset management plans are available to base project on the asset management plan. Okay, any, any issue with that? Okay, going on. Number two, new capital project submission shall, whenever possible, be programmed into the out years of the CIP. Anybody have any changes or wanna word that any differently? Okay, on to number three, to continue to try to phase large projects into small, more digestible pieces and give consideration of natural division points in a project and cost differences between phased project and an unphased project. Anybody have any issue with that?
Nope.
Number four, to encourage the use of capital reserves account as a method to spread cost of projects over a number of years, so bonding would not be necessary. What I would like to take out, so bonding would not be necessary, I think we just want them to look at spreading projects out. We may spread them out and still need to bond.
Correct.
So is everybody in agreement of taking that out?
No problem.
Okay. Number five, to look at developing smaller projects into yearly appropriations instead of every other year, i.e. sidewalk project. Any comments on that one? Number six, to propose no more than one major building project per year. Okay, nobody? Number seven, to plan department project based on the assumption that the library project is scheduled for two thousand and eighteen and the public safety building for two thousand and twenty-two, and I would like to remove the library project, since that's a done deal, and just focus it on the safety building. Number eight, to maintain focus on achieving and keeping ADA compliance at all town facilities. Any issues? Number nine, to maintain funding for town road infrastructure upgrades. Nobody?
Mm-hmm.
Number eleven, to utilize alter, alternate design. Oh, I skipped ten, you're right. Number ten, to continue to focus on building, maintenance, and repairs of town facilities, and I would like to change that to read, to focus on building, maintenance, and repairs of town facilities based on the asset management plan when finished.
Yep.
Those are all in, all in the process right now, so that's where we wanna base those. Now, number eleven, it says to utilize the alternate design to improve and expand the restrooms at dockside. That is already done.
I get it out.
And I had kinda reworded it, something like this, and Dave, you, Senical, you may wanna pipe up here. I said to base repairs and upgrades and expansion on the tie and bond asset management plan and the dock committee expansion design? Or do you wanna break that into another?
I think that should be separate.
Okay.
Dockside restrooms and stuff is already-
Yeah.
-happened, so, but the dock expansion has not.
That's a separate discussion.
It should be separate.
Yeah, the, the restrooms are out, but I wanna know, do you wanna, do you wanna separate the repairs and upgrades-
Yes.
-from the expansion? So we need to add an extra one. So we wanna say, to base repairs and upgrades on the tie and bob asset management plan, and then we want to base expansion on the duck committee's expansion design.
Mm-hmm.
So those are two.
Correct.
Okay, sounds good. So that'll become twelve. Okay. Number twelve, to consider the future reuse of the electric generation building on Laner Street. Evaluate the need for a new community center after the addition of the great, the town hall great room, Abenaki Four Seasons lounge, and a new library. And that one, I, I, you know, I could leave it as is, or maybe just say to, to consider the fut- future reuse of the electric generation building. Yes?
I, it wasn't that long ago that we were talking about tearing down the community center, about the terrible conditions. I don't think having a new community center's on the map at all, as far as I know, is it? Having a new community center?
I, 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 I don't, I don't recall it being on the-
It is.
It is in what year?
Twenty-twenty-two. Dave, you were the, Dave, Dave Owen, you were the sponsor of that in CIP. Or your name was on the form?
It's been discussed conceptually on and off for many years now. I don't think it's ever really made it unto the plan-
Right.
-because we have other projects of a higher priority that-
I wait to need for a new community center.
I'm willing to stand corrected. All I recall is that in the CIP program, there was a form, community center, there was dollars, and there were times associated with it. So you're saying that's just conceptual?
I, I, you know, I, I remember the form, I don't remember where it went on the-
On the spreadsheet?
Yeah, and in years it's been on, and then it's been taken off, and, and then it's been on. And I was wondering whether we just say to consider the future reuse of the electric generation building and let it go wherever that goes.
I think that's right. That makes sense.
And then you could leave, evaluate the need for a new community center, period. Cross off the rest of it.
Cross the rest.
Or, or do we do, do we want that only at the electric generation building, or do we wanna make that another?
Another bullet?
Another bullet.
Make it another bullet, then.
Sure.
I think the electric generation building is built like a fort. I've spent time there. We have an oil dripping problem with it, and, but it's, but it's a solid facility. I don't quite know for what, but it's a, it's just, it is a fortress, whereas at the community center last time, I spent, I spent some time looking at it, like fifteen years ago or something, and heard everything that was wrong with it, and so I don't think that the taxpayers are gonna wanna build a new and rehabilitate it. So I would just suggest we put the community center on a back burner and then investigate possible uses, maybe with a third party, on the electric center, or the electric building, because it's such a nice structure and a good location.
So let's see if we can come to a consensus here. Is everybody, and I'm not sure you are, Dave, so stay with me, to consider the future reuse of the electric generation building, and that doesn't necessarily mean it's for town use.
Period.
Period.
Right.
Yep.
And thirteen.
Will that do?
Sure.
Okay. Then thirteen is to evaluate the need for a new community center.
Evaluate the status of the present one, maybe. Evaluate the status, because maybe we wanna tear it down or something, or, you know, I mean- I mean, I don't think we want to rehabilitate it if it's, it should be quite redundant.
I think though, I think what you're suggesting, Madam Chairman, is the word community center is, is not a physical place right now. It is a concept that says there is, should we evaluate the need for a place somewhere in our town for community activities?
Yes, you're right. That's.
As opposed to the building we all kind of think about down on the, down on Lainer Street.
Yep.
So, he's saying we're talking about the concept of a community center, not the building.
Right.
Okay. Are you in agreement to add that or are you not?
That's fine. No, yeah, we could, we could be right here for that matter.
You could be. That might be where we come out.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any other gold or want to change any of the wording or word anything any differently? Dave, did you get all those or do you and I?
I may need some of your wording there.
Okay, I will, I have words all over the place here, so you and I'll get together and, and I have some of my old wording. Okay. So, then, are we all set on that and ready to move on to the next? We'll move on to the next item on the agenda and schedule upcoming board meetings. And I started to look and July fourth is on a Wednesday. So, if Becky comes and starts on the thirty-first of May, she would need to get a packet out the first of June or between her and Dave would have to work on it and then we would have a meeting the sixth. So, I was wondering whether we wanted to go to the second Wednesday in June, which would be the thirteenth and the twenty-second, and the second Wednesday in July, which would be the eleventh and the twenty-fourth, and then get back on our schedule of the first starting in August. It is going to put, well, no, that, if we go all the way to August, we have at least two weeks between.
Right. It's fine.
Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
The dates again?
Okay, we're going to meet.
I can't promise, but go ahead.
On June thirteenth and June twenty-seventh. We're going to meet on July eleventh and twenty-fifth. And then we will meet on August first as.
July eleventh, July twenty-fifth?
Yep.
Then you're only leaving one, one week between meetings into August, I believe.
Well, August, if you meet the eleventh, the twenty-fifth, yes.
Yep.
That's the only way, but we have that problem with the Fourth of July anyhow, which is going to shove us off. And we can get to that and maybe that'll be a quick meeting. I don't think anybody would mind if we had a quick meeting.
Not at all. I don't know.
Anybody have any issue with that? Okay.
So, we have four new meetings scheduled, right?
That's right. June thirteenth, twenty-seventh, July eleventh and July twenty-fifth.
Mid-August, I'm going to be away.
Six, twenty-seven.
All righty. Old business and the only old business that I have is I would like to announce again that on May thirtieth from four PM to six PM here in the great hall will be a reception for Dave Owen. I want everybody to get that on their calendars. Does anybody else have any old business?
No ma'am.
Does anybody have any other business? Town manager report?
Just a few things, Madam Chair. Tomorrow morning, of course, at ten AM is the shakedown cruise for the Mount Washington. And I know a few of you are signed up to take that in. Also, next, this Friday, May, May fourth is Arbor Day and there'll be a little Arbor Day function down at the new Foss Field Pavilion at ten AM on Friday. And Friday after that, Friday the twelfth is Bike and Walk to Work Week Friday and there'll be some activities around town on that day also. The finance director position has been advertised in a number of locations and we're starting to get some activity in terms of applications now on that. The police department asked me to let you know that they had a drug take-back event last week on April twenty-fifth at the police department and they collected seven boxes consisting of two hundred and forty-five pounds of unused and unwanted medications, mostly narcotics. They considered it a great success given the volume of drugs that were collected. Center Street, of course, is under construction as I guess everyone knows. Right now, they're doing some preliminary kinds of things like de-watering and sewer connections and Dave Ford will be at your next meeting with a regular capital projects update report, so he'll give you more details about what's going on at, at that time. Finally, I wanted to mention the tax-deeded property at fifty-eight Keweenaw Road. This is a property that this board took for non-payment of taxes last November, I think it was. And we were getting some complaints from neighbors about the yard conditions, that the yard was a mess. So, I've, I've had Public Works is going to be doing some yard cleanup work and such as it's a town-owned property now. We need to get it ready for, for sale this summer and following our town policy regarding the sale of tax-deeded properties that the policy says that sales of those kinds of properties should occur during July and August when the most people are in town and it's most likely to get bids for the property. So, it's that timeframe that the town needs to think about getting the property ready for sale for. And that's all I have.
Mr. Owen, I had, somebody asked me what was going on in, on Bay Street. In my understanding, we had a water leak down there?
We had what?
A water leak. They were doing some water.
That I'm not aware of. No one's made me aware of that.
Because people went to go around the back way and ran into problems on Bay Street and I had heard that it was water. But we should probably find out that if you can let us know.
Okay.
To address the questions that people have been asking and I had, had two.
I think that's been fixed. I've been there a couple of times recently and I didn't see any problem.
I, I, I got a complaint today.
Well, I wasn't there today yet.
No, I, just so we can tell them exactly what happened because the person said, well, I went around and I, I was late because I went around and went to go Bay Street and then Bay Street was blocked. So, I just think it would be nice for us to let the public know what took place. We committed reports. I'll start down with Paul.
I attended the planning board on behalf of my colleague, Mr. Harriman, the night. They are getting ready for CIP. They had a conversation about CIP membership. Also, Matt, town planner, at the end of last year's CIP solicited a bunch of feedback from people. He said he got a lot and so he's going to share with the planning board feedback in terms of just processing how it ought to work, you know, for, for this year. So, that, that was a good session.
I think he also was going to try to do something with the forms.
Yeah, he, I think, you know, remember at the last meeting you and I were at, the first, the first meeting, we, the forms were a little goofy, you know? Yeah, so he's working on that, but he's more, more working on making sure that adequate lead time. I think there was a comment made by Alan and others about getting into the process and going through it. He's, he's sensitive to that, at least that's what he was sharing, so.
Okay.
I think more to come on that one. I attended my first police commission meeting. It was a very interesting session. That's about all I'll say about that.
Brad?
I actually haven't had anything as I was on vacation a couple of weeks ago, so.
Good for you.
Quiet week.
Yeah, good for you. Dave Senegal?
I went to the buildings committee, meeting, meeting, same with the land use group. I went to a couple of those. Also, yesterday was at the public safety building, uh, meeting that they brought, the architects brought in three proposals for plans and we decided on one. So, they're going to start going ahead with making floor plan drawings with that concept in mind. And it will be, it looks like it's probably going to be a three-phase project.
Oh, okay.
So, it'll be phased over, over a period of time in three separate phases.
And you're seeing three different years warrant articles to do the whole thing or?
Probably not. It'll probably be one warrant article, but the whole project will be done in three separate phases, similar with the libraries.
Okay, okay. I attended the master plan community facilities meetings. I did two. I think Dave went with me to the water plant. We did that one together and you were there. And then the second one was, we started discussing how we will develop the chapter and some of the mechanics of just general concepts. And tomorrow, I am going to go on the Mount Washington cruise and I think Brad, you're going too and to enjoy the lake and, from the Mount Washington to make sure all that ice is out of there. Dave Bowers?
No, this is for me.
No, from Dave. Okay. Next item on the agenda is questions from the press? No? Next item is public input. Do I have any? Suzanne?
This is the existing building.
Yes, where you had your capital improvements on the agenda. I was curious about not only the process, but how we're, how we stand financially as a community and the debt, the debt. I'm very concerned about the debt. And what, what I, what I see happening, and I know Linda, I brought this up several years ago and you said, well, it's, it only amounts to pennies and that's probably true, but you watch the pennies and the dollars will take care of themselves. But what we have here is, what I found interesting is in two thousand and eight, principal and interest on the debt schedule, the grand total was twenty-four million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand and change. And we paid that year a million seven. And then two thousand and eighteen, it was twenty million, eight seventy-eight and we paid a larger portion of two million, eight fifty-three. It's not, it occurred to me, it's, our debt schedule is not like a home mortgage where your goal is to pay it off. It, it appears to me, I'm equating it to, it just keeps evolving. We're, we're carrying twenty million dollars roughly of debt continuously. And when one item gets paid up, say in two thousand and fifteen, something got paid up, then we recycle and we come in with a bigger number. So, it, it grows and I'm, I'm concerned about, about that. And when we have a, a one-year big project, we really need to go easy on the other things. But at any rate, it just occurred to me that it's not like a car loan. You pay it off at the end of five years and, and you own the car. We have this continuous, large debt that never goes away. I mean, one item will, one, whether it be a roof on some building or something, that will go away in twenty years. But we've, we've got debt going out to twenty, thirty and beyond, so it's concerning. And, and also what I noticed was our population per the census, which goes from two thousand and seven to two thousand and fifteen, has decreased. Not a whole lot, but it's going down instead of up and it would be better, I think, to go up. So, it went from six thousand, six twenty to six thousand, two forty-six. The other thing that I also noticed was our net valuation. The net valuation from my two thousand and seven town report had us at two billion, forty-eight million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand and change and our two thousand and seventeen net valuation, one billion, nine eight two, six three two. So, our valuation's going down a little bit. Our population's going down a little bit. Our debt schedule is the same or higher, increasing and then, you know, of course the taxes do too, but. So, I'm just, I'm just drawing that picture, but that's the way I see it. I know the capital improvements committee looks at the whole thing. I know what the rules are and how you go about it, but I just ask you to kind of look at the history of how you get to where you will be for two thousand and nineteen and take that into consideration as well, please.
And we do, and I think that's why you're starting to see us do a capital reserves account and it is to try to get away from bonding. And if we can save for it over two or three years and not bond it, that's a better.
Yeah, the bonding's really snowballing.
And I think that's what we're, as a board, have, you know.
Well, that's how, that, that, maybe, maybe Peter would see it different, you know, that works with figures all the time, but I just looked at it in a practical sense like a homeowner.
Well, you should.
Is there anybody else? I think Dave Bowers, you want to say something?
Yeah, I think, as you know, Suzanne, I think the town has been, the taxpayers have approved after a long, difficult problem with the town hall and they see the advantages of where you're standing right now. They approved the library overwhelmingly. I think Abbott, and a lot of this is public, public dash private, Abenaki Ski Lodge. So, I think we're building a great infrastructure that very few other towns have. There have been, going back in Wolfboro history, you know, in the nineteenth century, we built shoe factories and different things, but I think the infrastructures now are, are better for the average, whether someone's unemployed or on retirement or whatever they are, they're, they're much more egalitarian, the library and the, all these things I just mentioned, they're not specialized and I think it's a choice that taxpayers make. The next capital improvement project of size is the public safety building. And I suppose if nothing were done to it, it probably would last twenty years and be okay, like the community center is still there. But I think that there's been a public desire, we're still in the lowest quartile of taxes to spiff up our, our facilities. And of course, this is not only done by the town, but Brewster Academy. We have a brand-new high school, a new, a new hospital, so to speak. So, all this costs money, but I think it's not been overly hardburdened to taxpayers and I think it's, I think it's been well-considered by everybody. And the library, which overwhelmingly shows that taxpayers seem to approve of it, approve this.
I'm not suggesting that the infrastructure doesn't need to be taken care of, but I'm saying when you've got big-ticket items, just go a little easier on the other things, that's all.
Paul?
Yeah, I, first of all, thanks for doing that. Thanks for raising the issue. I think it's an issue that, at least my colleagues talk about a lot. The one we have to watch is we have to watch valuations in our town and you pointed out one-nine and there's a piece of paper I'm looking at that says two-one, so we could debate that. But your point is right and that is, we can't fund our future with an extraordinary amount of debt. It just, it doesn't work. However, we can't fund our future by asking the taxpayers to pay, you know, one year the number goes huge, the next number goes down. I think what Selectman Murray said, and this comes through loud and clear in, in what we're doing, is two vehicles to, to normalize this whole activity. One is to have asset management plans in place. Then we have to have the tough conversation as to how you fund them. And then the other is, in the absence of an asset management plan, we reserve some capital. You know, we kind of, as I said, it's like the Christmas club. You, you kind of stick a couple of bucks, a couple hundred thousand bucks in the kitty and that slows down the appetite for debt. But the fact that we have this, this debt service going on is not that bad right now. It could get worse if rates go up, but it, you know, not that bad, but we have to watch it and I think, I appreciate you bringing the issue forward. We'll keep looking at it.
Well, one thing that I asked at Candidates Night was, thank you for your response, was the. was the undesignated fund balance, and it was mistaken by-
Yeah.
-the candidates that night, but there is money that you can use, that you do use, to offset the tax rate. So, the tax rate is kind of like, I-
Your head's saying.
I got to be careful how I say this.
Right, you could be quoted.
The tax rate is like not a real number, because it is offset, but you could use more of that fund balance. The DRA, the Department of Revenue and Administration, their 10% rule is very flexible.
Sure.
And- and so, maybe- maybe look at that unfunded to help you get some of the things you want without affecting the tax rate.
You need to have drawers.
We could have- have this discussion all night, but I- I just wanted to bring it forward at this time because of where you're at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Are you just here to enjoy us?
I'm on the right of it. From the state of the town offices.
Okay, thank you.
She said he didn't hear from the town offices.
Is he now, voice mail, or not?
Okay, I'll take that up.
You need to come on up here.
Come on up in.
I just wanted to go on the record to let you know that Mr. Bronzetti did not hear from the town offices, either by email or voicemail. I checked with him after you told me that he'd been notified, because I was sure he'd be here, so.
Well, I know I had some interaction with him, because I- I asked him if he was a Wolfboro resident or not, because when he originally submitted something, there was no contact information aside from a Massachusetts area code phone number, so I-
I have a Massachusetts cell phone.
Well, I appreciate that, but I-
But I'm a taxpayer in Wolfboro.
But I specifically asked him. I said, "Are you a Wolfboro resident and qualified for this position?" And he said he was, so I know that I had some interaction with him.
Also, and you know me pretty well, as a member of the Heritage Commission, one of the founders of it, he never contacted me and said, "I'd like to be a member here." I had never even heard of him before, so he didn't really do any homework to sell his own position.
And I'm sorry that if that was a misunderstanding, that's why I asked, you know, on whether they've been notified, and that I'm assuming that the office does that when I get a response, so I don't know what happened. We did put him on as an alternate.
Well, my assistant is supposed to contact everybody, and I will check with her to see why that didn't happen, if that's in fact the case.
I just, I think you need to know that the Heritage Commission, those of us who meet regularly, are constantly looking for new voices at the table, people that bring new ideas, especially when we're in the master planning process. It's important to get really good balance, and so when we go out and recruit, we hope that due process is- happens.
But also, I think if somebody is brought up for nomination and doesn't win, you should move on and look for the next opportunity. In other words, I think it just causes hard feelings if you said, "We didn't do this, we didn't do this, we should have done this," you know, in my opinion, that's-
I understand. I just wanted to make sure that the Heritage Commission continues to be able to form a future.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, can I have- anybody else want to make a comment? Hearing none, can I have a motion to go into non-public session?
So, a moment. Six.
Paul?
Yeah.
Yes, Brad? Yes, yes, Dave?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, we're up. Okay.
There you have it, Suzanne.